Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for being here and welcome to the Pauling County Board of Commissioners August 2015 work session. We want to recognize our invited guests as elected officials. Saw Mayor Gary in the room. Mayor Iron, are there any other elected officials in the room? Okay, Dr. Will, thank you all for being here. Remind you to turn off all cell phones, snitch tells, pagers, anything else that might make a little bit of a racket. For our invocation and pledge this morning, we have Pastor Clifford McCready with New Unity Christian Fellowship Church for our invocation and pledge. Steve Preston. Seeing him gone, then if y'all will stand, I'll lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Dear Father, Lord, we come today with humble hearts, Lord, asking for your forgiveness, Lord, and we want to thank you for all the blessings in life. Thank you for being able to meet freely here and, Lord, all those that are harmed's way to make sure that we're safe and able to do this, Lord. We lift them up and you please protect them. Lord, for our public's sake and first responders, Lord, we just praise you for them and we honor them here today, Lord. And, Lord, we ask for discernment and wisdom in everything that we do in all the name we pray. Amen. Pledge?
Pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Minutes, August 11th, 2015, work session minutes and the August 11th, 2015 board meeting minutes are available for your review. Under announcements, have anybody here with the Sheriff's Department? Okay. We are going to announce that the Lamar Hunting 12th Annual Memorial Ride is hosted by Gary Gullis and it benefits the Georgia Sheriff Youth Homes Saturday, September the 19th, 2015. Registration begins at 8:30 at the Pauling Senior Center. They say kickstands up at 10 o'clock, $35 per bike and $15 per passenger, and this goes to the youth home. So hopefully we'll have a chance to tell you one more time about it before we have this and, I'm sorry.
Yeah, flowers.
Oh, flowers are in the back of the room, so if you want to pick one of those flowers up and you ride, you're certainly welcome to be a part of this. Today, we have Mary Carol Shiffield, Coordinator of the Pauling County Extension Office. We'd like to present Jody Martin, Jeff Hawkins, Bob Banks, Betty Cosgrove, Earl Cosgrove with a Silver Award for televised work for the Blair Witch Project.
Good morning.
Morning, morning, morning.
Thank you for letting me come and give this award to this team of folks. I want to tell you a little bit about this project. This is the National Association of Natural Resources Extension Professionals' Silver Award for Television Program, and it's being awarded to Jody Martin, Jeff Hawkins, Bob Banks, Betty Cosgrove, and Earl Cosgrove. And what we did is we submitted a team award for efforts to film an educational program aimed at helping Pauling County residents learn more about increasing soil and water conservation through tree planting and how to do it right. And soil and water conservation and tree planting are not necessarily the most glamorous topics, but with the help of Jody and Jeff, my team of master gardeners, it makes it a lot more fun and a lot more fun based on the Blair Witch Project produced the Blair Witch Project, to make it more appealing and make it reach people. And it was aired on a local cable access channel that still airs occasionally. The work that Jeff and Jody do at Pauling County 23 is so valuable to our county and it helps Pauling County Extension and other departments to really connect a lot more people so that they know about the services that our county government offers. So it's really helpful to our work and outreach, and so we really appreciate it. And it's really difficult for me to explain to you how valuable master gardeners are and the work they do. They're volunteers, they give freely of their time, they're well-trained, they have lots of expertise, and they have big hearts and curious minds, and a lot of days they have sore backs and dirty knees. But I'm real grateful to them. So if Bob and Betty and Earl and Jody would come on up, I'd like to present them with Gary.
Jody, would you like to talk about the property?
We appreciate all the support that we get from the different departments in the county. Jeff and I always say that we've got the best job in the county and, in fact, in the world. Now, you know we've got national domination, we're still working on global domination, but that's soon to come. Y'all have to get right back to work.
We may work on a project for you guys as master gardeners, our new union park. There are going to be plots there for people to have their own gardens, so we may turn to you to help lead that effort. So we can't wait for that park to get built and see how we can utilize your public. So thank you all. A great day, and you know, when you talk about global warming and other things that affect our county and state and the world, that's something that is out there, and I think planting trees and gardening are some of the best things we could possibly do to keep our nation, Lord. So thank you. The Board of Commissioners would like to present, to the public's sake, the appreciation and award to firefighter Matthew Chris with the Pauling County Fire Department. I guess we got Chief Calphrey. You're coming up here at the front.
And we'll have the board of commissioners.
And the word on twice, so if you'll stand and face the fire twice, we'll hear a little bit about you.
Just don't stand here and wait for it. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce firefighter Matthew Chris. Matthew's been working with the Pauling County Fire Department since June 2009. Since that time, he's made great strides and has become an invaluable part of our department. He is always positive, respectful attitude, and works well with all county employees. For responding to emergency medical or rescue calls, Matthew has the utmost compassion in taking time to make sure his patient and their families are well taken care of. Firefighter Chris has taken on the job training new employees and is often observed working one-on-one with personnel, teaching them the medical and firefighting skills of the body for their deployment and safety. This year firefighter Chris has completed a special, a rescue specialist course as well as hundreds of hours of education. He is knowledgeable, competent, and professional firefighter that has a self-motivated tech charge personality. Along with the high call volume, training, and daily duties, firefighter Chris found it time to get involved in extra voluntary projects. This past year, he showed special devotion to the youth of the county by volunteering to teach fire safety education in the county school system. This is no surprise that firefighter Chris was employed as a school teacher at the Pauling County School System where he taught children in special education. Matthew sets a great example by his work ethic and relationship with fellow coworkers and the citizens of Pauling County. I'd also like to mention that since he was selected for this award, he was recently promoted to the rank of Sergeant, so we call him Sergeant Chris. He's well deserving of this award for what he does for the art department of the county and the citizens. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you. Did you have a firefighter? Do you have some mom and dad with you? We'll get firefighters first and then we're going to get a family. So let's get firefighters in here, first responders. Thank you, guys, and let's get one of these families.
I was told to get injured.
Yeah.
Dad.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. Yours daytime, Dad. So will you tell us who we got up here with us?
This is my father, my mother, Jake Terrance, my in-laws, and my wife Megan and my two boys, Garrett Boe.
Gary Gullis has always talked about he'd like to be on the calendar with the firefighter teachers, not that dead look. Can't make that calendar, so thank you. Pledge your oath of allegiance. Appreciate y'all. Again, Matthew, thank you very much for your dedication. Appreciate you. No invited guests, bid awards, discuss actions to award water main relocation, State Route 61 and Nippon Road at the Low bidder, Tippin's Contract Incorporated, in an amount of $548,128 recommended by the Water and Finance Department staff.
Good morning.
Morning, morning, morning.
Occasionally, the state comes in, says your water line is in our way, and we're going to, we're going to widen the road or do something at an intersection and need to move the water line. That's exactly what's happening here. So on Friday or Thursday, we received bids, we had four participants to move the water line at State Route 61 and Nippon Road. The bids ranged from $548,128 to $982,810, which is a wide range, but what we're seeing now is an upscale construction project, so we are recommending award. We have reviewed the bids, the water system has reviewed bids, and Atkins Engineering has also reviewed the bids. And we have completed work with Tippin's, or Tippin's Contract has done work for us before, and they have been very successful. We are recommending award to the water bid, $548,128. Any questions?
Good job. Thank you. Reports from committees of the departments, there's none. Local participation on agenda items, no one signed up. Consent agenda, discuss action number one, consent agenda items. And that would be the flare items listed surplus and approved their disposal through auction or trade. At the landfill, there's a backhoe, unit 38, and there is model and serial number. The landfill, there's another backhoe, 386R, and model and serial. And then at the landfill, there's a Penn John Deere unit, 389, it's a 1988 model, and it's got a model and the serial number. Would you like to move this out in the regular section? I'd like to move it to regular section. Under old business, discuss action flare items listed surplus and donate these items to industrial building authority. There is a, at the Water Department, a new model tractor. At the Water Department, there is a Rhino Bush Hog, a list stable from July 28, 2015, Board of Commissioners. What would you like to do with this equipment?
I haven't talked with Michael Justice yet, but I think he can make use of some of this to talk to Rick.
Any other discussion? We're going to talk to him sometime today. We'll probably announce when he is. He may not, won't be, but we'll see. Okay, under new business, discuss action to adopt resolution 15-27, a joint concurrent resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Carroll County, the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, the Board of Commissioners of Harrelson, Board of Commissioners of Hurd, Pauling, Oak, and the Board of Commissioners of Tru to amend and reconstitute the joint development authority of Carroll County, Harrelson, Hurd, Douglas, Pauling, Oak, and Tru to incorporate and integrate Coweta County and their governing bodies as additional participating governing bodies in said joint development authority to authorize the execution of the resolution and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution to provide an effective date for this resolution and for other purposes. We had Lonnie, she's going to talk about this, but Robert Reynolds, would you mind coming into the lectern and talk to us about the West Georgia Joint Development Authority?
Be glad to. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Welcome to Pauling County.
Yes, good to be here. Good to be here. These joint development authorities were, started creating about 10 or 15 years ago, and this joint development authority, West Georgia incorporates all these counties and takes the total population that we've been serving, it's almost three-quarters of a million people, and it takes the entire western swath of the metro region, if you will, and incorporates Coweta County into that. We would like to see this happen, pretty simple strength in numbers when you have that many folks and those many joint development authorities working together and all pulling, pulling the same rope, if you will. And we also learn from each other when we have our meetings and talk about what's going on in other county counties and communities, and just keeping in touch with those, sort of best practices going around. And we also do some joint marketing efforts to promote this entire western side of the state. This resolution just brings Coweta County, every time a county comes in or drops out, the governing counties and commissions of each of those counties have to do a resolution to approve that. Do you have to answer any other questions?
My opinion is this was requested by Coweta County, and the form resolution was sent to all of the county commissions that were listed, that was Hurd, Pauling, Tru, Pauling, Harrelson, Carroll, Hurd, let's see if I got all, Coweta, of course, and Coweta did ask for it. Most of the other counties have done it already. I know Coweta and Douglas specifically did very early on, and they're just asking to join an already existing authority. We are not creating authority for this resolution, the authority already exists. They are just asking to join it. And Coweta, for those that don't know, is working on this.
That's right, it's just expanding the membership, if you will. That's right.
Robert, can you explain this better than I can, but Pauling is a tier four community, and we get less credits for being that. A tier one gives the best state credits for creating jobs and those type of things. If you're in a joint development authority with a tier one, you can take advantage of their status if it's something that's appropriate. So you want to address that just a little bit?
That's correct, because when the state started or did the legislation to create these joint development authorities, it was to foster regional cooperation. And they encourage these communities and these development authorities to get together and talk about economic development benefit, because people travel, as you well know, across county lines and jobs. So the state enticed the communities to do this by increasing their jobs tax credits that they were available to give to companies locating in the community. So if you're not part of a joint development authority, you would have a fewer dollars to give to those joint tax credits. But being a part of this joint development authority is going to increase our ability to give jobs tax credits through the state.
Some of this is the way they just go about dispensing money when they did the tobacco settlement. There were, there was money available, it goes to the state somehow, and that money is then dispensed out to try to help some of our poorer communities and counties with economic development. So where they didn't want to, third, a county like Pauling, they allowed us to be in a joint development authority with a, say, a poorer county or a tier one county. So that kind of helps us and helps you.
Oh, absolutely, and we, you know, we want to help our adjoining counties as well, and that's why the state did this, is to encourage, you know, to foster that cooperation with your counties. I mean, think about the population of these counties, as you read off, there's a wide range, Pauling being the largest in population, and I think Hurd is only about 11,000 people. But certainly those folks, you know, travel across county lines, government jurisdictions, to shop and work and things like that, so we need to, you know, help each other out, and the tide raises all boats, if you will, in a situation like this.
How often do you meet, Robert?
Quarterly.
Select your own chairman of the group of counties?
I have been with it since I got here, but that's the way it was up in the past. It was a rotating, rotating chairmanship.
And I believe you do meet down in Carroll County?
In Harrelson at the First Center.
At the First Center. The First Center also is kind of unique, it is a incubator for new businesses, so there's a lot of good that comes out of there. A company can only stay there so long and get started, and then it's for incubation. And then, once they grow out of a certain worth or something like that, they're not asked to leave, but they know they have to go out and be in the, in the real world. So it helps start new businesses, and what I've seen there when I've visited, there was pretty neat.
It's a, it's a great space to start to incubate, grow, and help those companies get out of, out of somebody's mind, if you will, to really production or service, whatever type of industry it is, and gives them a certain time to get their feet on the ground and launch out into the, to the real world, if you will.
If y'all have any questions of our attorney or whatever, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number two, discuss action to adopt resolution 15-28, adopting amended and restated plan for the County Board of Commissioners, ACCG, defined benefits plan. Brian, action.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Good morning. This is a fairly routine item, but as you were saying, the backup material, I have a few backup materials just because I want you to be aware and informed of this.
First of all, ACCG is Association of County Commissioners of the Union Church.
Right, and we are participants in ACCG's defined benefit pension plan, and as a routine matter, the IRS, IRS Supreme Court, Georgia law periodically changes. The IRS actually requires that every five years, you submit an updated plan document, that that include any of your amendments to the plan. What you have in front of you is our existing document, they already have a couple of those IRS provisions. It's quite honestly a lot easier to tell you what hasn't changed at all than it is trying to tell you some of the idiosyncrasies about what has changed. But the things that our employees are most aware of, comfortable with, concerned about, quite honestly, the basic plan design is the same in terms of retirement options, retirement age, early retirement options, how the benefit is calculated from your salary, how it's calculated from your years of service, eligibility requirements, those basic things are all the same. There are a couple provisions in there that some of them actually address what's considered being defined contribution plan, where an employee contributes. This plan is a defined benefit plan, doesn't affect those provisions. There's also some provisions about in event someone is out on military service, that in event of death during military service, they're deemed they have reported back to work, assist table with the benefit basically, reported back to work, the death for calculation of the death benefit for the family. There's all kinds of good stuff in there. If you got any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them, and some of the specifics, if you need me to round up a little more information, I'd be glad to. What they're asking us to do, we have the resolution that authorizes us to adopt this amended and restated plan, submit it back to ACCG, they will submit it to the IRS on our behalf. There is a limited power of attorney that's included in here, the velocity of proof of that as well, and the fact that much should be submitted to them. Is there, is any backing forth that authorizes the chairman to assign, to make sure we continue to comply with the IRS requirements, or any certifications that come up as this is interviewed?
I've seen a mount of the counties that are in it, it's, it's pretty much covers the state. Everybody's not in it, but most of them.
Most of them, yeah.
Most of them.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty routine stuff.
Yeah.
Ryan, I was looking down the table here, I don't see any copies. I don't have a copy. You have a copy.
It's on our, it's on our backup, on our app.
Okay, good, thank you.
I got lots of copies in my office, too. It's a nice stack, sir.
There's number three that may go hand in hand with this, discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign this, submit annual Association of County Commissioners toward ACCG safety discount verification.
Mentioned ACCG, similarly, we participate in ACCG workers comp program and also their liability and risk management program. This is a fairly routine item as well, and a good thing, very, very nicely be able to report to you, through our participation with these two programs, with the workers comp program, if you, with both programs, it's a good year to a series of safety criteria. They grant you discounts on your workers comp premium, your liability premium. It is worth noting, we've got a lot of folks in the county who help do things, these criteria. Tara is one of our safety coordinator specialists, folks in the fire department do a great deal to help with us. Within the departments, they have meetings, we have quarterly safety meetings, distribute materials, also have things like running MDRs, the background checks, when we have new hires, orienting employees on policy, adhering workers comp law, things of that nature. Workers comp side, this is over $100,000 a year savings by making all these criteria, and that's a, again, a lot of credit to all the folks who help do that. There is a limit on the liability premium of $5,000, but we do receive that as well by major criteria. As the, as I mentioned, that, and we will be able to forward credit to this camp.
You might have any questions, Ryan, on your work, or are you?
Mr. Chairman, here, I want to say just for my information, I actually read off the backup document, it looks pretty good, and ACCG's done a good job. As far as the defined benefit plan, everybody's included, the planned contribution plan, we participate in that, so.
We had, we had two different plans, great question. The plan we were just discussing is our ACCG defined benefit plan, that is county contribution only, employees cannot contribute, kind of the traditional retirement pension plan, the calculation is based on salary, years of service. Several years ago, we implemented a defined contribution plan as well, employees can contribute to a 457 deferred comp plan, deferred comp from tax, federal and state taxes, and a nice benefit on that is that if somebody puts in 4% of their base salary, they do a county match of 2%, and that goes to what's called a 401A account.
This time, if you're honest, I just wondered, are you overseeing the employees of the county that actually participate in the defined contribution?
I think it is, I will say, an estimate of about 550 out of 800.
So if you do participate in that and you go to do your income tax, then you're not taxed on that part that you put into the 457, you're only taxed when you take the benefit out, when you draw it out, either then or later in line.
Correct, the tax is the deferred concept of. The tax is the deferred concept of having an employee that puts $5,000 a year into that account, that you're going to be to end the year, that box one amount, that $5,000 is deducted from that. It's not taxable, not taxable until the point of the actual, like, distribution.
That's neat.
Oh, it's great, yeah, it's a great connection of all the plans, several options there.
And you've been doing this time-honem now?
Uh, yeah, your what year? 16th year this week.
You started when it was about 10?
I don't think so. I played basketball last night and definitely I felt like it was anywhere near 10.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of a regular business session. We do have an executive session going into land acquisition, personnel and litigation. Before I go into a motion here, second to do that, we usually, because sometimes that gets lengthy, let public participation on non-agenda items, these are people who called in and got signed up to be on the agenda. So if it's okay with the board, we'll move forward. And here from our public, we have Roy Sparks trying to talk to us about airport.
Good morning, Commission Chairman and Commissioners.
Morning.
Red Stark, clock. On March the 16th, 1999, the voters of Paulding County had two referendums to vote on. 1999, the referendum, question one, shall the board of commissioners of Paulding County be authorized to plan for the future transportation needs of residents of Paulding County through the acquisition of land for the construction of the general aviation airport? And shall there be issued $3 million of Paulding County, Georgia general obligation bonds for such purpose? The vote was yes, 907, no, 1628. After 79% of the voters said no, the industrial building authority and the airport authority still moved forward to purchase land and build the general aviation airport. There was no further citizen participation in the authority's decision to move forward. The industrial building authority made a $4 million interest-free loan to the industrial building authority, to the airport authority to purchase land. Today, the airport authority and industrial building authority, again, without the vote of the people, want to bring commercialization to the airport. Since 1999, the voice and input of the people have not been listened to in Paulding County. 1999, referendum question two, shall the board commissioners of Paulding County be authorized to plan for the future drinking water needs of residents of Paulding County through the acquisition of land to be used as a future water reservoir site? And shall there be issued $3 million of Paulding County general obligation bonds for such purpose? The vote was yes, 1859, no, 676. Commissioners, for 16 years, if anyone questioned the need for a reservoir, the response has been, but the people voted for it. Commissioners, the "it" that the people voted for was $3 million in general obligation bonds for acquisition of land, period. Now, after 16 years, business as usual has resulted in no public input or explanation of how much debt could actually end up on the backs of the taxpayers for the cost of Richland Creek Reservoir. It has yet to be addressed. This will be the most monumental debt ever to be placed on the taxpayers of Paulding County. In 1999, the people were told if they voted yes on both referendums, their taxes would go up $8 per $100,000 house for the next 17 years. Information I received on August the 19th, 2015, from Mark Ledbridge, the senior client manager with Brown and Carwell, was the anticipated cost of the reservoir is $168,703,782 and does not include the design and installation of the distribution pipeline and remote pump station. Commissioners, if the debt of $200 million gets placed on the Paulding County, placed on the taxpayers of Paulding County, the taxes on a $150,000 house will go up approximately $150 plus per year for 20 years. You will have to increase the county him and old millage rate by 30% or more. It is time to stop, give citizens transparency, honesty about what the debt of a commercial airport, unknown, and a reservoir, 200 to 300 million, will do to the people of the county, their lifestyles and pocketbooks. I ask that you put both of these projects on a referendum with true total cost and let the voters decide. This lectern will grow quieter if you let the people have a choice. Let the people speak and listen to what they say. They put you where you're sitting today. It's like a good friend of mine says, it's about people, not politics. Thank you.
Again, and I pointed this out before, Mr. Sparks is a Baptist County pastor. He did the courtesy, because he does own land and buildings here. But as far as water resource, folks, we don't have a choice. We're facing, I don't know if you remember the drive of '07, but landscapers were out of business, car washes were out of business, you couldn't water your lawn, you couldn't water your gardens, you couldn't wash your car, you couldn't do anything you wanted to do, you were on restriction. Now, building a reservoir is a very, very difficult task. And we've only spent 16 years studying this, putting information out to you so that you would have it. There's webpages available, there's information available. This was something that began to, where we saw in even as early as 1999, that we needed a source for water. You don't have an interstate highway and you don't have a river. So building a reservoir is one of the most unique things you could do to help us move into the future. And what we're doing here today is not for me, is not for most of the ones in this room, but it's generations that come after that, future generations will thank us for building this reservoir and having a source for water. I'll move on to our second guest, Chris Goltz-Sotis, amendment to alcohol pouring license. And did I get your name correct?
It's actually Desatell.
It's a what?
Desatell.
Desatell. I just say it.
It's French. It's French, that's it, explanation. Thank you so much for giving me time.
You have five minutes, if you would.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate Commissioner Carmichael for inviting me to come. My family has lived here in Paulding County for over 20 years. And I'm here today to propose an amendment to the current Paulding County alcohol ordinances, specifically the retail consumption on premise and the ancillary wine tasting permit. As Paulding County continues to evolve from what has always been to me a sleepy rural community to a more desirable suburban community, we need to update our ordinances to keep up with the surrounding cities and counties. And to attract new residents and service the current ones, Paulding County needs to have new and unique businesses to entice consumers to spend their time and money in our county rather than going out to other locations and other communities. My request is to revise the current pouring license to allow for a specialty wine and beer shop that would allow them to pour two ounce samples of wine and craft beer to legal drinking aged customers without requiring food sales or limiting the number of days in which a pouring establishment may pour these samples of wine and beer. In addition, the shop may also conduct educational classes that can include tasting as part of the educational experience. This ordinance is similar to pouring permits in Cobb and DeKalb counties and in the cities of Acworth, Marietta and Roswell. The concept of try before you buy is not new. I've seen firsthand on how this similar business model has succeeded in our surrounding communities. And the popularity of this model results in a positive experience for the customer and profitable business for the community. With the passing of this amendment, specialty wine and beer shops will have flexibility not allowed in supermarkets or packaged stores. And I appreciate your consideration on this matter and happy to answer any questions.
We have distilleries, but you just don't know where they are.
Well, I'm not talking about making anything, we're just wanting four samples. You know, just, just basically, we find that that helps the consumer make a better purchase decision to find something that they, that they like.
I think you need to just refer to this as the recipe.
The recipe?
Yeah, the recipe.
Okay. All right.
You said there was several other communities that probably do this.
Yes, sir.
Who are some of them?
In Marietta, there is a small wine shop called Uncorked. And they are right off of Du West, Acworth Du West and Kinsol Du West, they're right in that corner. I actually do wine tastings there currently. And the, I guess the community has embraced this business. We've seen, they have a club membership, we've seen that club membership triple in the time that we've opened in three years. And the popularity, the enthusiasm of all of our customers has kind of prompted people to say, why don't we have something like that in Paulding County? There's a lot of Paulding County residents who cross the line, go to that store and they spend their money there. So I'm being entrepreneurial and thinking, well, I could open up one of those if I just have the ordinance in order to do that.
And Major LaHome has given us a lot of information and done research on how it would affect Paulding County and we appreciate that. Chris, appreciate your being here. And you would locate that around the Seven Hills area?
Yes, that's the property in which I'm looking at. I've spoken with the property management, which is Public's supermarket actually owns that land there or that building. And they're fully behind me and supporting it, so I don't find any issues in that area.
Okay, well, any other questions? Have you had any discussion with the people who live in that community? Have you went to any halls, association, or you just talk with publics at this point about what happened with us?
I've spoken with publics and like I said, I know a lot of people who live in that area. I've spoken with them. I've not actually, actually done like a community reach. I know with Seven Hills, they have a very active community. So my next step would be to approach them. I know that they have their own little pub, like private clubs that they purchase wine for and everything. So I know that they're involved with that, but I know that there's not any other business like that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you, very much. That's not your time, but we asked you a lot of questions.
Oh, okay.
And it's your time, but we interrupt you with questions. I don't know if there's any follow-up you want.
No, I'm happy to answer questions and if y'all don't have any other questions, I guess I anticipate the decision. I also have some, I don't think this is, I can take it, okay. I have what, yeah, I have what is actually on the books for the ancillary pouring license or tasting license, which is limited, and the retail consumption. And then I have my proposal behind it.
Okay. We'll take a look at that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We have Commissioner Chairman Jerry Sharon, Paulding Water Source, Cobb County Water Authority.
Good morning, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Seven Hills and Bentwater routinely known throughout this region as the drinkingest crowd of Georgia, so I would take that into consideration. Last week, I spent every single day in this building trying to get a certificate of occupancy for a couple who are retired and moving here from Missouri. And I want to take just a moment to thank some of the people I talked to last week when I was here because these people were in a moving truck and it was very possible they were going to have to spend the weekend in a hotel or in a moving truck. And I know I'm going to forget some people, but I know Scott Green, Lori Ashmore, Ann Littman, Bruce Coyle, Steve Turner, Chris Robinson, Janet Brown, Dawn Pilgrim, all of these people and more helped to make this happen. I also called on Commissioner Crowe and Chairman Austin to help when it looked like maybe we were getting up against the deadline. And I really, really appreciate you guys helping get these people a CO so they could move into their house. And during the course of the conversation with Chairman Austin, he was actually in the park at the time, we got to talking about the reservoir and its history. And it occurred to me at that time that you guys are at a distinct disadvantage over any commission we've had ever. There are no holdovers from previous administrations on this board up here. So that means you're at a disadvantage when it comes to the history of things like the reservoir. One of the things you would know had you been on a previous administration, you would know that things like delaying getting permits so that you could go a year and three months from now and have an election, basically could end getting your permit. If you get the public to get involved in infighting over whether we build or don't build a reservoir right now, when you've already got your draft permit and you're going towards the, you're going towards the end zone, gentlemen. And if you don't push this ball over the end zone line right now, your grandchildren will suffer if this reservoir isn't built. So I thought I'd come here today and I thought that I would give you guys the briefest of history on the reservoir. And it actually goes back even beyond the Carruth administration, it goes back at least to the Hollis administration. And I remember the Helms administration talking about this thing. At that time, they talked about damming pumpkin vine and rack and cream. And of course, you all know that the three things you have to have to have industry come into your county are transportation, sewer and water. We have your transportation because you have the rail. We have a four-lane road, 278, which goes to a rail yard, which goes to the Port of Savannah. Your four-lane road on 278 goes out to US 27 and takes goods and services all the way up and down the East Coast on 27. Chairman Helms began the efforts to get countywide sewer. And our county sewer system continues to expand through, through every administration since then. In the meantime, many of you may not know this, you weren't, you weren't as involved as a lot of people were back when we were all in the trenches trying to bring little things like Chick-fil-A here. I was actually part of that effort. Red Lobster was coming and then they backed out the last second because they didn't know we didn't serve alcohol. But Tip Top Poultry identified this county. They wanted to come here. Of all the counties in the world, they wanted to come here. And we actually sent them away. You cannot come here, we don't have the water. We don't have the water for you. But we'll hook you up with Polk County. So how many thousands of jobs have been out in Polk County because we didn't have the water? You can't count on Cobb County's water source if you're trying to bring in industry, you've got to have your own. So going back to the Hollis administration, the, there were people who were fighting this and they were basically environmentalists, but I think that we've overcome a lot to get where Chairman Austin and this commission have us right now. In 1999, the voters approved a bond issue to buy the land. Chairman Carruth at that time set forth a plan to move forward for a reservoir. After that, our administration purchased the land and pushed, pushed the application process forward. As Chairman Austin can tell you, this is not an easy process and there are so many places along the way you can get sidetracked. I spoke to Harold Rehais at one time, he was the director of EPD, most people up here don't know this, he picked our site. We didn't pick it. Our consultants went to him and said, where do you think will be an environmental approval? Along at the same time, Cobb Area Water Authority was developing two reservoirs at the same time. Hickory Law Creek, which is the one they built, and another one, I don't remember the name of it, was up near Altoona. And they were trying to get us to commit to buying a certain amount of water through a certain number of years.
If you will, I need some clarification on that because I need to ask you, there was a contract and I believe it was offered, maybe you didn't sign it for one reason or another. And go ahead and explain to me, since I asked you the question, how that, how that took place.
This was a very tough time in Paulding. This was in '01 and '02. And remember, since 1951, when Cobb Area Water Authority first went into business, Paulding County started buying water 20 years later, in the late 60s and early 70s. And we had different contracts and different unsigned contracts over. Paulding County started buying water 20 years later in the late '60s and early '70s. And we had different contracts and different unsigned contracts over those years to try to make sure we had the water flowing into Paulding. They're trying to build two reservoirs. To build a reservoir, the first thing you have to show the federal government is need. To show need, they couldn't do it. They have Lake Altoona, they have water sources all over the place, so they didn't have the need, they didn't have the justification, and Cherokee County didn't, and Canton, Cuyahoga didn't have the need either to build a reservoir. By the way, go to that reservoir sometime, it's very similar to ours. So they, they're looking and they're reaching out for other communities and counties and they're saying, hey, would you sign on and say you'll buy water through X state? That'll give us the need we need, okay? In the meantime, we're trying to get our reservoir permit in. I felt like as my job and our commission's job wasn't to take care of the residents of Canton and Cherokee County. I don't think it's your jobs up there to take care of the residents of Cobb County or Polk or any of the surrounding counties. I think it's your job to take care of our citizens. So we actually use that as a negotiating point. We try to find the right number and the right number of years that we would say we'll purchase water from you to not hinder the moving forward of our permit application. This is really important at this point because what we wanted as much as anything was a seat at the table on the Cobb Marietta Water Authority. You have no idea how important that was. And what it did in 2007 may have saved us even, what Chairman Austin talked about was the tip of the iceberg. I'd be happy to expound on '07 also, but we got that seat on the board. And that gave us a voice in the future of water distribution in this part of the state. We had never had that. We had, that was a lot of bloodshed over getting that seat. And I understand Chairman Austin is chairman-elect, is that right, or the vice president, vice chairman?
Vice chairman.
Vice chairman. So that gives this county some more horsepower when it comes to deciding water issues in this area. Do I, can I take a moment to tell you about '07 because I think?
I need to hear about that, but the selection, if we went back and I asked you why you selected the site you did and you got Harold Rehais, who's now in private business.
Right.
But when he sort of put a pin down, from what I understood, and I wouldn't there, said that this would be the right place. We were already in the water wars with Alabama and Florida. And so when Johnny Helms and those guys could have found a, possibly a creek or a pumpkin micro, we can't do that.
That's exactly.
So we had to build an off-site, if you don't mind addressing that.
Yeah, and that actually will dovetail into the '07 discussion. The off-site reservoir concept, not only Harold Rehais say this is your best site, he told me in the hallway at the Capitol, the decision that made prior to my term, I just ran into you a year or two later. He told me in the hallway at the Capitol one time, he said, I picked Richland Creek reservoir site for you guys. It's the only site, to put it in layman's terms, you have a river with too much water in it called the Atawaf. You have a hole that's empty with a part-time running stream called Richland Creek. I've been there when there was no water going through it. In order to get around the whole snail darter issue, you know, our favorite resident of Paulding County, the Atawaf, the Cherokee darter, they had to find a place where there were no snail darters. Richland Creek had no snail darters. Then we got into snail darter habitat. Well, maybe there will be snail darters in 50 or 100 years there because there's the right habitat. So finally, Rehais said, Richland Creek is your only place. He then, and he backed, he backed our reservoir, which was critical. Without EPD's support, you don't build a reservoir. The feds aren't going to allow it. The water wars. The water wars began in 1989 when the talk of the Harrelson County reservoir came out. And the water wars, this is where the '07 discussion comes in. The water wars peaked in '07 during that terrible drought. In 2007, we had a monumental drought and Florida and Alabama were trying to take us to the Supreme Court to shut off North Georgia from getting any water out of Altoona or Lake Lanier. I mean, I want you to understand, they really, really were trying to do that. And we were blocking them at every step of the way. We couldn't, we knew that if it got to the Supreme Court, it was dicey. We might lose and I don't know what we would have done. So we then had Altoona basically dry. And we were all getting our water kind of on a wing and prayer. And I got a phone call and I was in my car from Glenn Page. And Glenn Page is the director of the Cobb Marietta Water Authority. And Glenn Page says to me, I'm calling you first, Mr. Chairman. You sit on our board. He said, this is a very important phone call. And I said, okay, Mr. Page. And he said, we don't know what's about to happen with water. He said, but I want you to know that everyone's water is in peril. And I said, well, Glenn, what does that mean? And he said, I'm very concerned that if this thing takes one more step and gets to the Supreme Court, they may shut us all down because Lake Altoona wasn't originally planned to be a drinking impoundment. And so I said, Glenn, are you telling me that Paulding County may not get any water? And he said, I'm not telling you that. I have, we have a contract with you to provide you with water. He said, but I'm also not telling you that we're going to provide you with water. And so I'm driving, I'm driving back to my office at that moment with my heart racing. Imagine what happens if they shut the water off. And it occurred to me, we're at the end of the water line. I mean, Cobb County's water line, it comes to Paulding County. It doesn't go beyond that. So if it were us, if it were y'all, and you were providing water to Harrelson County and our water supply was dwindling to nearly nothing, would you make the decision to give Harrelson County our last drop of drinking water or would you take care of Paulding County residents? I mean, I don't think I need an answer to that question, but that's what, that's what I thought we were against. And I don't know that we would have gotten that call without that seat. This water discussion went beyond that. This water discussion, literally Paulding County was mentioned in the White House. I know that sounds brandy-ose, but this is a story Senator Isaacson told me and then I'll be done, I promise. He said, Jerry, I was in a meeting in the White House with all of our elected representatives and senators from Georgia and all of the elected representatives and senators from Alabama. And he said, the President was going into the room and we were all yelling at each other. They were yelling, you can't stop the water from coming downstream. We were yelling, you can't turn Atlanta off of water. And he said, it was, he said, it was just total chaos in that room. And the President of the United States comes in the room and he said, okay, tell me what this is all about. And basically Alabama went through their argument, Georgia went through their argument, and Senator Isaacson looked at the President of the United States and said, Mr. President, we have a county in metro Atlanta that has just instituted what I believe are the toughest watering restrictions, certainly east of the Mississippi and probably in the United States, as Paulding County, Georgia. People are putting buckets in their shower to catch the overflow or to give their pets water. He said, if you do what the state of Alabama wants you to do, you will be turning the water off to the biggest city in the Southeast. And he told me this story. He said, the President of the United States looked at everybody at the table and he said, I'm leaving, y'all better work this out. But if you think I'm shutting the spigot off to the city of Atlanta, you're crazy. So y'all work this out. And they did. Paulding County got mentioned, like I said, somewhat brandy-osely, in the White House in a discussion with the President of the United States. Because we have a contract, doesn't mean we always have water, okay? We have a contract with Cobb Marietta Water Authority. If we don't build this reservoir or if we delay it long enough for the environmentalists to stop it and it doesn't get built, that is on you guys. And as a citizen of this county and as a guy who went through the war and has sat up there and had citizens wishing to speak and beating me up like you guys get routinely, I'd like to ask you guys, I mean, quite honestly, I'm going to put you right on the spot. Is there any one of you five commissioners right now that is unwilling to say you're 100% in support of the reservoir? I mean, Commissioner Crowe, it's in your district. Are you 100% in support of it?
At this point, the citizens voted on it. It's my job to be their voice. Am I open for discussion as we're having now? I certainly am. While asking this question, to me, where does Polk County get their water from?
That's a, that's a great question. Every county that surrounds Paulding has a water source. Every single county. We don't. But every county that touches our county has a water source. Let's see, Plarto has Lake Altoona. Cobb has Lake Altoona. Douglas County has the Dog River Reservoir and the Chattahoochee River. Carroll County has the Chattahoochee River. Harrelson County has the Little Talalusa and the Talalusa River. And Polk County is in a great position. They have a unique set of springs on the western end of that county. They're just south of K Springs going down toward Cedar Town, there's a bunch of them. They have one spring called Big Spring, I think, it was owned by some Indians back in the 1800s. It produces 4 million gallons of water a day, all by itself, that one spring. They have other springs, so they get their water from there. And by the way, history lesson number two, did y'all know that Paulding County buys water from Polk County?
No.
We did. Not our water system, but residents of Paulding County buy water from the Polk County water system. So that's where everyone gets their water. Now, we're not allowed to have any, I mean, that's, that's what the discussion is, whether we should have a reservoir or not. I don't think that's a, that's a valid discussion for this time. I mean, I just don't. So I hope you guys will move forward. Is there unanimity on the board? Are you all in support of a reservoir?
Yes, we are.
At this point, I think we are. And I think what Mr. Sparks had brought up, did the citizens get all the information they needed and are they aware of the fact that their taxes may go up? What are they aware of or not? And I believe that in the future, for my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren, we need a water source. We need to make sure we got that. It's my job at this time, I've heard the citizens when they vote, they vote for the water. At this point, I'm supported by it.
I will say this on that issue. When I went to Washington multiple times between 2001 and 2008 and met with congressmen and senators to get money, which we did get for the reservoir, millions of dollars, it never was brought to my attention or never today tell me no, that the federal government wouldn't help us during the Purdue administration, Governor Purdue administration, and during Governor Barnes's administration. There was always a willingness to help from the state. I think that you guys have done a pretty good job of setting up strategic alliances like this joint development authority that was started, you know, about 10 or 15 years ago and it continues to grow. I remember when it was first set up, it was like four counties. And when I saw this thing, I was like, man, that's great. We'll continue to develop those relationships at the state and the federal government. And I think that, I believe that number, that the gentleman from Douglas County had, I believe 160-plus million dollars. There may be ways to make it less. I don't think delaying building the reservoir for what would be this is August, so you would have your referendum to get the most voters, it'd have to be in November of next year. I don't think that your number of 168 million will go down by delaying until next November. If you get your permit, you can start construction very quickly. I was on the Cobb Marietta Water Authority when they got the permit and I was on there when they started construction with Canton on Hickory Log Creek. And it was like, ah!
What did Hickory Log Creek cost? Do you know, have any idea?
I believe it was 121, but, and that's going from Marietta. Come on, that was 2006 or '07, but using the 121, I remember they spent like 13 or 14 million on land acquisition. Well, we bought that land out there for 2 million and some change. So we have that. Could you imagine what that land would cost today? And I will say this also, you need to recognize the citizens in that area, they didn't try to hold us up. The citizens that were selling us land did not try to rake this county and get more money. They took our appraisals and almost every one of them accepted our appraisal and took the money. They were excited because most of them were saying, man, we're finally getting a reservoir. When you get a guy who's willing to sell you land to a government and what you ask him to give you, ask him to take, you've got, you've got buy-in from that part of the community. So, you know, whatever the right number is today, I don't know. I believe the gentleman from Douglas County's number of 168, it may be right, that may not include land acquisition or may include it, I don't know. It was, it was really a unique experience to watch that dam go up and to watch that reservoir starting pounding water. It really was. Thank you. Same. I'm sorry I took so long, but I was.
Thank you very much. Kelly, Punks, like you, Mark, as y'all come to the lectern. And again, what we're, what we're faced with is, yes, we're on what a pipeline's going to cost, what a pump station's going to cost. And I've heard people say that, well, maybe we want to impound the water and then let Cobb Marietta Water Authority withdraw it, treat it, and then send it back to the city. In my opinion, as a business manager, that takes us out of control of our own water. So, you know, the whole time I've looked at this, I thought, we need to own our own water source. We need to own our own pump station and water filtration. Kelly, if you will take just a few minutes and update us.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the interest in the reservoir and just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said today. First of all, the information provided to Mr. Sparks, it was clearly identified that those numbers are in progress. We are 60% with the design of the plant right now and we're 100% on the reservoir. We've got the CMAR team and the designer of the reservoir currently revising their process. So when you hear that number, please recognize that that is in flux. We, within the next 30 days, should have a firmer number. The other thing that I wanted to just point out is that water and sewer is an enterprise fund. It's a revenue fund. You do not fund these projects with taxes. These projects get funded by ratepayers, the cost of water and sewer service. So for example, when you have your bill, you pay for the usage of the water. That is, that money that goes, that the customers pay actually go to fund this. These projects get funded through bonds, totally independent from county taxes, not at all related to millage rates. It's all based on consumption. So a homeowner that uses 10,000 gallons of water a month pays a higher amount than a homeowner that uses 3,000 gallons per month, for example. Now, it's important to point out, as a wholesale customer to Cobb County Marietta Water Authority, you pay a wholesale rate. You pay a higher rate than the cost of actually producing the water. So the idea of the Richland Creek Reservoir is you will now own the facility and the ability to produce your own water. So you can produce water at a much lower cost than what you were paying Cobb Marietta right now. So I know there's a lot of discussion about numbers. We're in the process of pulling that together and showing a financial plan to show. It is a very large number, 168 or more. However, that doesn't mean that all of a sudden there's going to be a tax bill because it's a revenue bill. And it doesn't necessarily mean that your rates are going to go up astronomical to be able to pay for this. We have said all along that there likely will be a rate increase, however, you are seeing a rate increase every year essentially from Cobb Marietta. So when you compare what has happened historically with what we paid to Cobb Marietta and what is projected to take place in the future, compared to developing this water supply, long-term, there is a cost savings for the county. And we'd like the ability to come back to the board and brief you on that, show the financial model, show the updated costs so that everybody completely understands how this reservoir gets paid for over the long-term and the long-term economic benefit that this project actually has for the county.
And what we're looking at is, we're paying for a finished product, as Kelly said. When we receive that water, it's a finished product. All we have to do is distribute. Now, we will actually be in the process of treating this water. So Raff Telus, just before rounding off numbers, he gave me a figure of about 150 million when the day is over. And 25 years from now, we would have paid Cobb Marietta 150 million dollars and still not own our water source. Or we could build the Richland Creek Reservoir and have 150 million dollars in the reservoir and own it. As they talked about, one of the things I do on Cobb Marietta, being the finance chair and vice chair, is very involved in the CIP. And what we've done there is capital improvement planning, which allows you to take pipe that's been in the ground 50 years and replace it. So a lot of the rate increases that we have to pass along to Paulding County is to help pay for that infrastructure. And believe me, 50 years is a long period of time. James Fields here, he tell you, they usually don't last that long. But that's important, what we're having to pay for here in rate increases is the old pipe they have in the ground. Where you're faced with another problem, if you look at the city of Atlanta, they've never replaced their pipe. So you go down King Street Street, you go down another street, and it's closed off for a week because they're trying to replace pipe that they never looked at. So what we've So what we've done is, when you hear that, I go to a Cobb Marietta and we go to the Water Works Convention, we're going there to see equipment. For instance, what we just implemented was official equipment that goes through pipe and takes a picture and lets you know if you possibly have a rate restriction to happen, a piece of pipe that's about to deteriorate, and avoid a major problem like the city of Atlanta has. We're able to locate this pipe, we're able to take sections of it and improve it. What you're paying for right now is improvements that are happening with Cobb Marietta, and I'm 100% for that because if we didn't, then one of the pipes that may break the next time may be the main pipe coming into Paulding County. But Mark, I think you had something you wanted to add.
Just one last point regarding the permit, which we should be getting here shortly. That permit's good for five years. And then if you don't use it within five years, you can get away for maybe five more years. It used to last forever, but they don't do that anymore. And the point is, is it took you 16 years to get this one. If this one goes away, can you try to revisit the core in 2032 or 2042? You've got another 20 years trying to get another permit if they give you one. You could be looking at 2050, 2060, 2070 before you ever got a permit to get. So keep that in mind. The money situation is important, but the regulatory process that has already been taking place, that might start over again in 2040. So then you're looking at 2070, 2075, and then look at the cost of that reservoir in the year 2075, if you start looking at inflation over that period of time. So the decision here-
The thing to think about too, is endangered species. You wouldn't believe, if you had to be on these calls I'm on, I just like hold it in my head thinking, how in the world could they be worried about an Indiana long-eared bat? But if we have delayed our permit probably four or five months because they've now put the Indiana bat on an endangered species. So we had to go out, Ms. Farnell was there with his son, and he watched them catch bats. We did catch an Indiana bat, but we had to prove they wouldn't be on our property. Now, can you imagine if we're within another five or 10 years or even longer, how many more endangered species after we've already studied all the darters in the world? Now it's bats, and who knows what will be next? And they literally hold up an entire project before you get this done. So I wish we had done this five years ago, I wish we had it done, but we have worked as hard as we could to get this permit, and it is, I think, the last email I got. We're within a few days of receiving the written final permit because we already have the drought. And I signed it, sent it back down, they signed it, sent it back up, and we're done.
Well, in closing, as Mr. Sparks knows, he sent me an email, we got him all the information. I'm sorry for the two-day delay, we had to get all the numbers together for you. But as we're moving forward, as I talk to all the commissioners, if you have a question, if you don't know the difference between a general fund and an enterprise fund, we will sit down with you and educate you for every step of the way, as we have done since day one since we've been on board, and that will not change. Send the emails, make the comments, ask the questions. And we will make sure as best we can that everybody is educated on this process.
Yeah, I know all the commissioners appreciate, as I do, Chairman Chair coming and giving us that history and education. I really needed that. I appreciate you putting it all together there. Also, well, Kelly and Mark already sat down. I think it'd be interesting if you reviews us. Chairman Chair also mentioned that we purchased water from Polk County, or some individuals do, after we had the Richland Creek reservoir. A revenue source, the county could be selling water, although the adjoining counties, as you mentioned, have water sources, but if they're not sufficient at that time, then we could actually market our water and get revenue from that.
Chairman Pro and I, thanks to Roy Sparks, had an opportunity to sit down with Glenn Page. We had a great conversation with him. The one thing he said that really, really made me think was this comment. He said, you know, I hate to lose you as a customer, but I think you're doing the right thing, and I think you should do, move forward on your own reservoir. He said, let me explain something to you. He said, if you decide not to build the reservoir and you stay with Cobb Marietta, I have no problem with that. He said, but Paulding County's infrastructure is not good. It needs to be replaced. You need more infrastructure, you need to expand. He said, we're talking about millions. He said, I promise you, Cobb Marietta's not going to pay for that. So that means Paulding County residents will pay for it. So it looks like either way, we've got something that's going to cost us water. Do you want to own it, or do you want to rent it?
We did go into executive session, and it could be lengthy. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session, land acquisition personnel, litigation? Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. On the favor, say aye. It's a 5-0 vote. We will return this to the committee. We're back in session. No action, official action was taken in closed session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
On the favor, say aye. Oh, no, your second. Sorry, second. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
And there will be no 2:00 plant plant-
Oh, no 2:00 planning?